... So.
If you want to talk to Allison or Pat West, they kind of like you rely on most of the time.
Yeah, I mean, they're kind of the ones that take care of the retire.
I admit it's like a little.
I did, yeah, the golf league, yep.
The country's the end of your friend again, this place. We just in the country still want.
Yeah, like I was reading about horse.
Working on currently, we've reconstructed all of the sidewalks that were marked for replacement. We still have the sidewalks for grinding, one of those trip hazard to complete yet, but that will be ongoing, you have to follow to complete the project. We do have the affidavit of publication as well as the notice of public hearing for the individual property owners. Looking at the project location, every year we look at one-third of the town. This year it happened to be the east side of town as well as one location on the west side, because we did get a complaint about one particular trip hazard. So that's why the west side location was identified as well. But currently, the project is at the east side. Next year, we will circle around to the west side of town to make sure that those are in compliance. So this was a staff initiated project. We reviewed the project area and identified any tripping hazards or any hazards for pedestrians along the sidewalks. And one quarter of an inch constitutes a tripping hazard. So we're looking for areas that were beyond that to identify and get those corrected. So as you can see up here in the top left, and I printed out those pictures because I knew these were going to be darked on the screen here. You can see here, you know, there's a lip, probably about one inch, inch and a half there. Obviously, it's a tripping hazard. It's right next to the roadway. So that was one area that we identified for replacement. Over here, you can see there's holes in the sidewalk. You know, somebody could accidentally put their foot in there, possibly sprain their ankle or something. And so, these are instances of why we needed to do the project. Down here on the bottom left, you can see there's a crack in the sidewalk here. Even though the sidewalk is broken, it doesn't have a lip or it doesn't have, you know, a hole that would constitute a tripping hazard. So even though it may be cracked, doesn't necessarily mean that this needs to be replaced. If it's adjacent to another panel that's causing an issue, it likely got taken out. But that alone didn't create a problem for somebody to replace it. Same way with on this, and you can see there's cracks all over in the sidewalk. But that was not an area where we identified. So looking at the areas that we did replace, you can see up in the top left as well as in the right, in the bottom pictures here. These are areas where we've reconstructed the sidewalk, taken away the tripping hazards, and made sure that those areas that we reviewed meet the ADA compliance. So overall, we were urgent in looking at just over 10,000 square feet of sidewalk replacement with restoration to the boulevard areas. Residents actually repaired just under 6,000 square feet. So about 60% of the area, residents decided to do it on their own as opposed to have with the city's project. The city's project consisted of just over 4,000 square feet of sidewalk replacement as well as sidewalk grinding. So the construction costs on the project, the construction itself, were projected to be $40,555, excuse me, with a contingency of $560, for a total project cost of $41,115. Looking at our preliminary rates versus our projected final, you can see with the assessments, we're obviously projecting more in terms of the assessments. We're anticipating less people to, you know, do the sidewalks themselves. It's good that they took care of it themselves. Part of it here, the city decided to, remember at our last meeting, we wanted to keep the square footage the same, so that's where the difference came in. So the city picked up the remainder of that portion, as well as areas that are pedestrian ramps or areas where the sidewalk was bad by like alleys or something like that. That was 100% city cost. So the total project came in at $41,115. Looking at the assessment rates, looking at our preliminary versus our final, sidewalks, 100% responsibility of the buying property owner. Our preliminary estimate was $7.50 a square foot. We were looking at assessing it 4% over five years. When we opened bids and looked at the unit prices of the entire project, instead of $7.50, it actually came out to be $8.68 a square foot. That's what the individual residents are assessed at. Grinding came at $13.32 per linear foot. And you'll notice I've got 4% highlighted in there. I noticed in the resolution it was at 5% as well. But 4% is what we indicated on the preliminary assessment rates in terms of what the interest would be over the five-year term of the assessments. So the assessments themselves, they are payable in annual installments. There is no charge if the assessment is paid within 30 days from the assessment rule adoption. So if you adopt it tonight, the 30-day clock is basically up on October 8th. Looking at the special assessments themselves, you may pay at any time, all of it or a portion of it to the city administrator. After those 30 days, it does go to the assessment rule. So if you decided to pay interest after October 31st, interest will be charged through the succeeding year, so the following year. But you can pay any portion, all or some of those assessments at any point in time. It's just depending on when the assessment has accrued through, or the interest has accrued through, sorry. One other item to note is that property owners who are disabled or who meet income guidelines and are 65 years of age or older may apply for deferment. We saw that in our consent agenda for our street project. There was a couple of those that deferred for that. And that is the same for our sidewalk improvements as well. Any questions on the project of itself?
Any questions for Greg? That will open up the public input, and on a public wish to speak. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:55. And what's the wish of the council on resolution 2015 dash 73?
I make the motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Gushik, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve resolution 2015 dash 73. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I do have one question.
Yeah.
On the bonds, is 4% enough to cover our bond costs or is it better to be at 5%?
We won't bond for this. It's all internal. So we'll do it at 4%.
Any questions? Hearing none, resolution call a roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Wiltgren?
Yes.
Silka?
Yes.
Ampler?
No.
Amson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
We want the whole business, rescind resolution 2014 dash 50, authorize purchase of property. Carl Hogan, approve. Laurie?
Last year, the HRA wanted to purchase some property that was owned by Carl Hogan. We attempted to go through the process to purchase or to obtain the property. There were some title issues on the property, and Mr. Hogan passed away during the time that we were trying to clear up the title work. And so, since we passed a resolution authorizing the purchase and we haven't been able to purchase it, we need to rescind that resolution.
What's the wish of the council?
I make the motion to rescind resolution 2014 dash 50.
One second. Got a motion by Councilman Gushik, second by Councilman Lodrian, to rescind resolution 2014 dash 50. Any discussion? Just a motion? It's not a resolution, you don't need it. Right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. City Hall parking lot project, Larson Excavating, ratifying, confirm. Greg?
Yeah, when we were reconstructing the parking lot, as you recall, there were some pipes that we needed to replace, that we discovered we needed to replace underneath the parking lot. The council authorized us to purchase materials in the amount of not to exceed $50,000. We actually came in under that amount in terms of the material cost. But then on the installation side, we paid Larson Excavating $16,800 to install the water unit itself. So tonight, we're looking at ratifying and confirming the payment for Larson in the amount of $16,800 to be charged to the water movement.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilman Hanson, to approve. Any discussion?
Well, that's one of them things you can't foresee. So it's not like you knew this was going to happen, so you have to pay a bill, and we're looking at it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. City Hall restroom improvements, operates architect Kevin Anderson, approve. Greg?
I solicited a proposal from Mr. Anderson in regards to architectural services for making the public restrooms here at City Hall ADA compliant. Mr. Anderson provided us a cost not to exceed $3,250 to prepare the plans and the specifications for bringing the bathrooms up to current ADA standards. One thing I will note, when they were installed, they were at ADA standards at the time, but as times change, they no longer meet the current standard. So if we would like to move forward with that product, it was included in the capital improvement plan of this year, we'd be looking at expending $3,250 from the equipment fund of services.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilman Gushik, authorize architect Kevin Anderson of $3,250. Any discussion? So, any idea on, this is just for the, come up with the drawing?
This is for the drawings and the specifications, for incorrect.
$3,250.
Blueprints?
Blueprints, and yes, to make sure it complies with all the new requirements.
You know, years ago, I remodeled my house, and I came down here with my sketched-out plans and showed them to Jake. And I had to change a couple of things, and I came back the same day and it was approved. And that was for my whole house, top to bottom.
The difference is, that's your personal residence versus a public building. We still get some of those types of applications for regular building quotes for residents where it's napkin or on a piece of paper, but because of a public building, it has to be licensed by an architect.
Well, shouldn't our contracted building inspector be able to tell us if?
He won't be able to sign the drawings.
That's the frustration with the public sector. In private sector, you just call a contractor and have work done, get a couple of bids, but you have to have plans and specs signed by an architect, and this is the only way you can get it done. It's frustrating.
Every street project, everything we do, from putting up lights, sidewalks, whatever, it has to be authorized, business is public.
It's either going to be an architect signing or a P E signing. They're putting their license on the line. It's frustrating, but it's just.
So you want to comply with what are the major changes that it will need?
The ones that I know of offhand, and I'm not an expert on bathroom, but what I know of offhand is the handicap stall that's in there currently is too narrow. So somebody that's in a wheelchair wouldn't be able to necessarily get out the wheelchair and onto the stool. So what we'll be looking at doing is removing one of the partitions and combining those two into one. So essentially, in the men's and the women's, you'd be losing one toilet stall to make one of them handicap accessible.
So it'll become an individual restroom rather than a?
Well, right now, in the men's, there's two toilets and two, no, one year old. And in the women's, there's three toilets in there. So you'd be losing one of each of those toilets.
So it's not going to involve moving a wall or anything?
Not moving the wall, no. There will be some plumbing stuff that I'm aware of.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Fire Department Training Funding, Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education, accept.
This is the training reimbursement program that the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education has. Based on the number of firefighters that we have, we have been awarded $5,760 paid for a portion of the training that our firemen have to attend. Excuse me.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to accept.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Boyum, second by Alderman Hercock. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Water Treatment Facility Report, or Improvements Engineering Design, S E H.
If you recall at our last meeting, we had S E H here to present the capital improvement plan for the water treatment facility. The major concern that we have, at least at that facility, is the filter media itself. It's brushing up against that 20-year timeframe in terms of when we should start looking at, we should replace that, the filter media. And so we're looking at hiring their services at $157,900 to prepare the first phase of that plant upgrade over there. You know, the media itself is kind of the backbone of our plant. Without that, we really can't filter the water for previous. So it is a big number in terms of dollar amounts, but it is in line with percentage-wise in terms of construction. It's right around the 9% of construction for their fee, and that's normal with those types of services. So tonight, we'd be looking at hiring S E H to complete the plant specs and the bidding portion of it for the water treatment plan.
Question for you, Greg. So roughly 1.2, 1.3 million, is that what we're looking at for the project? On this portion of it?
No, it's more than that. It's maybe about 1.7.
1.7? So we're going to spend 160 to get our drawings to do our 1.7?
Correct.
So if we're not going to cop up to 1.7, we don't pay to authorize 170 or 160 tonight if we don't plan on moving forward with the 1.7?
True. I don't think we have much of a choice in that 1.7, though. I don't think our filter media is going to last that much longer. I know our assistant superintendent was over and said, "I don't know what I'm going to do until next year to keep the, basically treating the water the way it is today." Because he was already concerned 20, the winter of 2016, July 17, he was too far away. And I said, "That's as fast as we can get it." So he's already expressed concerns that the material or the media is degrading faster than what he expected.
So we just got to keep this in mind when we look at water and sewer rates and we look at our budget.
That's correct.
Because we've got a big chunk of change, that if we're going to authorize this, we're going to have to do something with our budget and with our levies. With our water and sewer rates, we have the money to pay for it, so.
Yeah, you're going to be, if I can, I mean, you've got about, your improvement fund right now is about $1.6 million.
Right.
And you've got $672,000 scheduled for 2016, which will take half of that, or there'd be a billion left in 2017. You've got $2.2 million scheduled, a billion dollars short. You're going to have to do a revenue bond or something, but you got to have your rates in order to pay your bond bills. You've got a big bond dropping off in, I think your payments drop off pretty substantially in, you know, 2021 or so. I don't know if you can run it for another, you know, six, seven years. Your bond payments go way down in that timeframe, but I'm just saying, you've got a pretty big, pretty big number to overcome. And that's just on the water side. When you get into the wastewater side, we are just starting at, you know, 711 million this year in 2020-something.
So Greg, do you guys know as far as getting any kind of grants or anything like that? Like I talked to before, but then we have to follow the guidelines with our rates and?
Right, I mean, there are some grants that are available. One of the things that, you know, like the city peers in that Ridge Curry district, they opted to go with the grants, but then your rates have to be such that, and I forget what the term is, but it's like, they have a minimum rate, kind of a schedule that they have to fall into in order to apply for their grants and to receive them. So you've got water and sewer rates, so in that Ridge Curry district, they're much, much higher than ours, because they have to comply with the requirements of the grant.
Either way, you're going to spend money.
Well, you're going to spend it. It's just a matter of, we can give our money to pay for some of it, but then the residents end up paying the bathroom rates.
You're going to make a vote to that, didn't you?
No, I just, that's a question before we do it. In case we want at the table, can we see where we want to do with our levy next? Go around with their preliminary? Or if we want, that's like, I brought up some discussion before.
Well, how long are, how long are the plans good for? And I think if this moves forward, right, the whole, these improvements are going to be rapidly occurring.
It can become a hurricane.
Well, yeah, I mean, this will authorize S E H to complete the plans and specs. They would be ready for bidding in the spring of 2016. And then at that point, we would have to authorize yes advertising or no. Much like our street project, we have to come before you for authorization before we go to the next level to do any of that stuff. To answer your question directly, how good, how long are the plans good for? It depends, and it depends on how much the Department of Health changes their requirements. But, you know, we're simply replacing the media here, so it's going to be good at least a year, I'll say that.
Just like you were saying earlier, this is something to other experts think, which are doing right now.
You know, think about it like the oil filter on your car. When it says 3,000 to 5,000 miles, could you drive it 10? Probably, but could you cause some problems on your car by not changing it? That's where we're at with the filter media. You know, this is what cleans and polishes the water. Will we run it past that? Sure, but it might cause us some bigger headaches down the line if we procrastinate.
Well, I'm just looking at it. I get the filter media issue. I've seen the flume for myself. I don't know why it waited this long, looking like it is.
1.7, if it's, you know, it's.
Some of this stuff, I think, could be done as you go along. And the reason I ask about the timeframe is when we get to the backwash pump, and we're talking about a secondary pump for redundancy, well, it's been operating like this since 1974.
That's the same pump that's been in there since '74. It's 40 years old. That's the reason behind the second one. And we have one. So we would like to put one basically on a shelf, so when that one kicks the bucket, you can drop this one in and keep going.
But you do.
You do.
So can I somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Approve?
Yep.
Got a second? Got a motion by Councilman Gushik, second by Councilman Lodrian, to approve S E H to move forward plans or designing. Any more discussion?
Yeah. $157,900 to have an engineering firm come in and do this seems very expensive, but it's the same thing. We just went through the bathrooms. This has to be signed off by professionals. Then also, I was listening to Mr. Hercock earlier, they have a few people coming into the city, and all of a sudden, they're finding out we have to kick in a whole lot of money to bring up all these things. We better educate the public about this one pretty intently, because they need to see that this is something we have to have, it's our water. And I don't know how we're going to get past this one without spending a lot of money. I don't think we can, so it looks like we better start the process now and move on before we're paying extra money.
Greg, worst-case scenario, if it went pot on us, worst-case scenario, what are our options?
I don't know. Dwayne and I were actually talking about that this afternoon. I don't know what our options would be if, you know, those filters plug up, what do we do? We've got, I mean, we'll look at that to see what happens or just come up with a solution between now and then. I don't have that answer to any.
Public water?
No. Back up to my Sam's point.
We would do something, I just don't know what that action would be yet.
Well, a short-term fix will probably be a waste of money, because then we have to do the whole plan to fix it, so.
Sooner or later, it's got to be done. Sooner or later, it's got to be done.
Otherwise, somebody would be asking up here in three, four years from now, "How could you guys wait so long? Why didn't you do that three years ago?"
Well, I'm kind of asking that in my head right now, what was going on five and six years ago? I mean, that flume didn't sneak up on anyone.
No, it didn't.
Yeah, there was a thing called losing LGA, or short-handed, on every area in this city. It was tough, a lot of the creative went on in that time period.
Paul, and I, when I asked the lady that did the presentation, if we could do preventative maintenance over the years, she pretty much said, "No, that you really couldn't. That stuff just sneaks up on your assets."
Well, in this particular case, we've got, the one that Lisa was talking about, we have one flume. And so it comes into there, and then it splits into the four different chambers for treatment. That flume, in order to take it out of service, we're going to have to bypass it until the one gets in. And I think that was kind of the scary part of all of it, is how do you physically take that part out of where all the water runs through that one channel in order to keep water operational and keep providing water to the city? That's going to be the hardest part, but it's something that we have to tackle regardless. I mean, it needs to be done.
One kind of thing, a little bit along Jeremy's lines, how bad would it be if we waited until we budgeted, only because if we do approve this, and then we have enough votes against or not in favor of raising the levy high enough for the fees, then what do we do?
Well, the levy is separate from the water fund. The sewer and water are enterprise funds, so all of the money generated there pays for their improvements. This would be, we'd be looking at user rates for this.
Which is insufficient.
True.
I was just thinking about this. And so then, why did I? Remind me to know, I know when Brainerd, they got the whole lot of sales tax paid part of it, but they also had to put on some capital type of, you know, X dollars per month per user that goes into a separate capital fund. I mean, when they improved their treatment plan, it was almost $30 million. And the whole lot of sales tax wasn't going to pay for all that. And you can't count on the whole lot of sales tax for everything. That's not going to do it, but, I mean, the users are going to have to kick in. So I'm going to call up there, I think, and just talk to them about, you know, how they set, what they set up, and maybe it's some other charge, not that you want to hear, but some other charge that goes on the bills, and it's just trying to build that capital fund to take on the needs that you've got going on. Otherwise, where, if we can support it, where would the money come from? Let me, I mean, it's going from the taxpayers. I mean, even if you issue a revenue bond, it's a G O revenue bond, general obligation revenue bond, which pledges the full faith of the taxpayer. which pledges the full faith and covenant of the, of the taxpayer.